Good morning. I'd like to call the September 23, 2010 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order, and if you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Austin is flying out today to a meeting, and it's actually a big honor. He was just put on a board of directors for ICLEI, which is the Institute for City-County Environmental Leadership folks, and that's not the correct name, but that's as close as I'm going to get because I've forgotten what they actually stand for, but it's ICLEI, and it's quite the honor. And Commissioner Leininger should be here any moment, so. We will get to our first part of our agenda, which is reading and adoption of the Land Use Ordinance, and there is no public testimony on this item. We closed public testimony last time, so this is just the final reading and adoption. So Dan Chandler, would you like to help us through this?
It will take three commissioners to adopt.
Oh, that would be true. So why don't we move on to the second presentation? We'll move on to, and we'll put that second on the agenda, and we'll go into the presentation with Joe Cozio. Come on up, proclaiming Monday, September 27, 2010, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children in Clackamas County. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Joe Cozio. I work in the Children, Youth, and Families Division of Clackamas County, and I'm here today to read the proclamation for Family Day.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to begin with a brief overview of the history, maybe? That'd be okay? More than a decade of research by the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse at Columbia University has consistently found that the more often kids eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke or use drugs. Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, is a national movement launched by Columbia University in 2001 to remind parents that frequent family dinners make a difference. While there are no silver bullets, substance abuse can strike any family regardless of ethnicity, affluence, age, or gender. The parental engagement fostered at the dinner table can be simple, effective, to help prevent substance abuse in kids. Family Day began as a grassroots initiative and has grown to become a nationwide celebration. In fact, in 2009, President Obama and all governors and more than 1,000 mayors and county executives proclaimed and supported Family Day. I'd like to read the proclamation now.
Great, thank you.
Proclamation to proclaim the 27th of September, 2010, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children for Clackamas County. Whereas, more than 10 years of research conducted by the National Center on Addictions and Substance Abuse at Columbia University has consistently found that the more often children and teenagers eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke, drink, and use illegal drugs. Whereas teenagers who eat dinner with their families two times a week or less are three and a half times as likely to have used prescription drugs, illegal drugs, and three times more likely to have used marijuana. Whereas teenagers who eat dinner with their families are half as likely to smoke cigarettes, smoke marijuana, and drink alcohol. Whereas the correlation between family dinners and reduced risk for teen substance abuse are well documented. Whereas parental engagement is known to be one of the most crucial factors in determining the likelihood of substance abuse by teenagers. Whereas toddlers benefit from family dinners by learning an array of skills such as table manners, family dynamics, social skills, language development, and an open mind to trying new and healthy foods. Whereas toddlers and young children gain self-esteem, learning that they are an important part of their family, sitting at the table with everyone else. Whereas family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family life in America. Now, therefore, we, the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners, hereby proclaim Monday, the 27th day of September, 2010, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children. Clackamas County, Oregon, we encourage all families to join in this observance and urge all families to eat dinner with your children.
Thank you. Any comments? Commissioner Bernard?
My comments, actually. This morning, I attended a hunger relief networking meeting. There also, it's important to note that there are an increasing number of families that actually don't have food to sit down and have meals, and there are a lot of great services throughout the county, a lot of agencies that numbers have increased rapidly. Today, there was a Colton area that served about 106 families, and some of those families are actually living in the woods or in tents in people's backyards. So I think along with the importance of sitting down and having dinner with your family, which we always did when we grew up, it's also important to note that we need to make a bigger effort to make sure that those who can't afford to sit down and have dinner have an opportunity to do that. So please, you know, contact our Clackamas County Social Services at 503-650-5738 and see if there's some family you might be able to help sit down and have dinner. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Well, it's important and very much appreciated that you've brought it forward to us, and with that, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation.
Madam Chair, I move we proclaim Monday, September 27, 2010, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children in Clackamas County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leehan and seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. I failed to acknowledge that our county administrator, Steve Wheeler, is out of town, but we have Laurel Butman, our deputy administrator, with us, and thank you very much for attending and being here today. We'll move back to reading and adoption of the Land Use Ordinance, and Dan and Joe will This is ZDO 219, an ordinance amending Chapter III of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan in Sections 300, 400, 1,000, 1,600 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance. Dan?
Good morning. Dan Chandler, Assistant County Counsel. As the Chair said, the matter before you is the reading and adoption of ZDO 219, the streamlined tree ordinance. This ordinance was approved by a majority vote of the Board of County Commissioners on September 8 after a two-year or more public involvement process. At the September 8 hearing, the Board directed staff to prepare a final ordinance for reading and adoption. That's the ordinance we have here for you today. I want to raise one brief matter for your attention. DTD staff understand the Board's direction, that there be some consideration given to persons who might not be aware of the ordinance in the near term. Staff have looked at that, and they're confident that there won't be any code enforcement issues in the short term, so we are here to urge your adoption of the ordinance.
Great. Questions for staff on this portion? All right. The first thing we'll do is we'll actually have a motion to read by title only, and then we can have further discussion on the actual ordinance itself.
Chair Peterson, I move we read zoning and development ordinance number 219 by title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leininger and seconded by Commissioner Leehan. Any further discussion on this portion of reading by title only?
Actually, it doesn't matter how I vote on this particular one, does it?
Correct.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be unanimous. Okay. Now that everybody's here.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Mary, as our clerk, will you read ZDO 219 by title only?
You bet. Ordinance number ZDO-219, an ordinance amending Chapter III of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan in Sections 300, 400, 1,000, and 1,600 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Thank you. Having read it by title only, I'll ask for a motion to adopt ZDO 219.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance number 219, amending Chapter III of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan in Sections 300, 400, 1,000, and 1,600 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance as approved at the September 8, 2010 land use hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leehan and seconded by Commissioner Leininger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Bernard?
I think this is a good start, but I think that a lot of work needs to be done. First off, I'd love to see, and I'm committed to working with Commissioner Leehan and other members of the community to talk about an incentive program. I think that we do have too many laws and regulations, and a program that promoted tree preservation or tree planting would be a great step forward. So I'm planning on voting no for this, for that reason only.
Okay. Any other comments? No, not really. I'll just remind everybody that the Board is approving a much-reduced zoning ordinance that just deals with clearcutting within the urban area on specific parcels that can be developed in the future, and we have also directed staff to look at a tree planting program within the county, to come back with a proposal on that after we adopt or not adopt this, and also, we have sustainability code amendments that are coming up. So we have several different ways that we're looking at the tree canopy issue that's outside regulations, but this was felt to be the most important part that needed to be regulated at this time rather than have a full tree code. So I think that's pretty important. Commissioner Leehan?
And I would just add to that, that it came forward because of, it was brought to us because of concerns from primarily the Oak Grove neighborhood, which is an unincorporated urban area, and the issues that they were having. So it was directly to address the problems that they were having with this, and it's really confined to that.
So with that clarification and the movement forward on the next steps, I think the whole Commission is very appreciative of comments, Commissioner Bernard, on incentives and moving forward and actually dealing with the tree canopy itself. So is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you, and thanks to all the staff for all your work on trying to craft something that actually dealt with the issue and the outcomes that we were looking for in the next steps. So thank you, and thank you to all the citizens. We very much appreciate all of the input that we've had over several years. It's a lot of time and effort, but it's worth it in the end to get something that's going to make a difference. So we'll move on to our Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Commissioner Allison, who normally joins us, is not here today. We are hoping that she feels better. She's not feeling well, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Chair Peterson, I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leininger and seconded by Commissioner Leehan, that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. Move on to Citizen Communication. We have one person signed up. If you would like to sign up for Citizen Communication, I would ask that you fill out one of these blue cards and bring it up to Mary. In the meantime, I will ask Les Poole to come forward. Les? I'll need your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
Les Poole, 15115 Southeast Lee. They call it Milwaukee, but it's Oak Grove. I don't think there's probably one person in 20 that can tell you where the boundary between Milwaukee and Oak Grove is, except for him. I just wanted to make some comments about public safety. Unfortunately, in tough times, crime goes up. I've been a victim. Lots of people have been, and whether it's reported or not, crime is going up, not down, from what I'm seeing, especially at the town center area because of the issues with the terminus of the light rail project. In other words, we've put the parking at a location where, no matter where we put the parking, we're going to have issues, and that's the big concern in Oak Grove. We get the parking, and we really wonder when we'll hear about how we're going to have increased protection, and we're going to have safety around the structure. What will happen if the economy doesn't improve and public safety budgets are cut in the future? So if we're going to build it at Oak Grove, I'd like to see something in the form of an actual ordinance or part of a requirement that certain standards for protection around this thing are met into infinitum, as long as it's there. The other issues I want to talk about in terms of public safety are, in the rural part of the county, which is the part we all love to play in. I took a drive the other day up clear up to Bagby. It's surprising how many monuments and crosses there are at the side of Highway 224, and one of the worst things about what happens is that we've got so many urban people going up there totally ill-prepared. I know I'm preaching to a choir, but is there any way we can get some more signage and information out that as soon as you get past North Fork Reservoir, your cell phone isn't going to work? So when you're up there and you're in trouble, the nearest place where there's electricity or people or any kind of help is at Ripplebrook Ranger Station. If you're at Ripplebrook or Bagby or anywhere up there, there's no phones, there's no phone signal. I have two separate cell phones I've tested, and you cannot get a signal from above there until you're almost within a mile of North Fork. Obviously, at Promontory Park, there's electricity, there's phones, there's some services. So anything we can do to notify the public, hey, when you get up here, you're asking for trouble because this river will eat you alive. I would also appreciate, maybe Commissioner Bernard might have some comments about any progress. I need about 10 seconds. Any progress as we head into winter for locator beacon requirements up on Mount Hood? A lot of the people that go up there and get in trouble are practicing for areas where they can't possibly get that help, but that's not a very good excuse for what's been going on up there, and I appreciate the three minutes.
Thank you, Les. I'll ask Commissioner Bernard to address that during his Commissioner comments. Anyone under Citizen Comments? Citizen Comments are for non-agenda items. Seeing no one coming forward and no other blue cards, I will close the Citizen Communication part of our agenda and move on to the public hearing for an exemption and authorization to use the request for proposals. Method for the Clackamas County Broadband Innovation Initiative Fiber Infrastructure Project. I have practiced that so many times. Good morning, Lane.
I was striving to find some way of truncating it, but my friends in IS would not allow me to do that, so they like the complicated things.
No, it's great.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Lane Miller, Purchasing Manager with Clackamas County. We're here seeking authorization to use the Request for Proposals method for the Clackamas County Broadband Innovation Initiative Fiber Infrastructure Project. In order to use the Request for Proposals method to solicit for public improvement projects, the Board must approve, acting as the local contract review board, findings of fact that justify the granting of an exemption from the requirement of public contract rules and regulations, which require competitively bidding the project. Before final adoption of the findings, exempting a contract from public improvement as a requirement from competitive bidding, a public agency is required to hold a public hearing. Notification of the public hearing is to be published in at least one trade newspaper of general statewide circulation, a minimum of 14 days prior to the hearing. An advertisement was placed in the Daily Journal of Commerce on September 7, 2010, notifying interesting parties of the draft findings. The advertisement stated that the draft findings were available in the office of the purchasing manager and that this public hearing would be held on September 23, 2010. No comments were received by my office during that 14-day period. This meeting will be the last opportunity for receiving comments. If no comments are received that result in a revision of the draft findings, the Board of Commissioners may, at its discretion, adopt these draft findings as the final findings for the exemption at this public hearing. Little background on the project. Clackamas County is developing a comprehensive county communications plan with the goal of expanding all forms of communication services, both public and private within the county. This plan includes the expansion of infrastructure and the support of broadband services to public agencies, businesses, and private citizens. Clackamas County Broadband Innovation Initiative Project, truncated it there, is an integral part of the plan to provide high-speed fiber backbone throughout the county, and this project is the first phase in the development of the core infrastructure. The project is approximately 180-mile fiber optic network designed to provide point-to-point, middle- and last-mile network access to approximately 160 community anchor locations throughout the county while providing backhaul abilities to private broadband providers desiring to use the network to increase or enhance their services. This expansion includes the development of new partnerships with communication companies to provide essential data and communication services over the new infrastructure for both public and private users. Clackamas County, in collaboration with the awarded contractor, seeks to achieve several specific objectives with respect to this procurement. The awarded contractor will be expected to provide middle-mile and last-mile route engineering, complete a required environmental assessment on those routes, help the county to develop a fiber allocation model for allocating fiber resources to the anchor sites and partners, construct the full middle-mile infrastructure as well as the last-mile fiber connections, develop a long-term plan to support and facilitate emergency repair and services of the fiber infrastructure. Clackamas County currently has an agreement with Portland General Electric for the use of PGE service poles whenever possible for the middle-mile infrastructure or last-mile delivery. The anticipated budget for this project is between $7.5 and $8 million for both design and construction services. The Clackamas County Broadband Initiative is funded through a National Telecommunication and Information Administration Broadband Technology Opportunity Program stimulus grant, along with matching funds from the project participants, including the county. The proposed alternative contracting method that we're contemplating is to, A, publicly advertise the request for proposals. Contractors will then be selected through a two-step process. The first step will be a step that will consider qualifications, include a review of the design and construction team, their experience, and capacity to do the work. The second step will be a proposal that will be the technical approach and the cost. A selection committee will review the design and cost proposals, rate and rank the proposals under the criteria that's predetermined in the Request for Proposals. Under ORS 279C-335, there's a requirement that local contract review board make certain findings as a part of authorizing the use of an alternative contracting method. Those two basic findings are that, A, it is unlikely that the exemption will encourage favoritism in the awarding of a public improvement contract or substantially diminish competition for public improvement contracts, and B, that the awarding of the public improvement contract under the exemption will result in a substantial cost savings to the contracting agency or the public. The Clackamas County Request for Proposals process has been designed to fully comply with the test of the Oregon Public Contracting Code, specifically ORS 279C-335 for alternative contracting methods. With that, staff respectfully recommends that the Board, acting as the local contract review board, consider the comments received from the public on the proposed findings, if any, and direct staff to revise those findings, if necessary. If no revisions are made, staff recommends that the Board adopt the findings and grant the requested exemption. Does the Board have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Bernard?
I guess I need a little more explanation of what you're asking to be exempted from.
The ORS 279C requires that a traditional design, bid, build type of process occur. To deviate from that process, we're required to seek an exemption from the traditional design, bid, build process to use an alternative process. In this case, it's a design-build where we're hiring one team to do both the design and the construction of the project.
Thank you.
Any further clarifying questions? All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to testify on this, now would be the time. I don't have anybody signed up. Seeing nobody running forward, we'll close the public hearing portion of this, and I will ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the request for an exemption and authorization to use the Request for Proposal method for the Clackamas County Broadband Innovation Initiative Fiber Infrastructure Project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Leehan. I have an idea. I think we should call it the broadband I squared FIP.
Works for me.
It's getting closer.
Yeah. CBII is usually what we refer to it as.
Is there any further discussion by the Board? Commissioner Leininger?
I would like to thank Dave and Dave, who are sitting in the sort of gallery right now. You have done tremendous amount of work on this project. You've done a lot of community education and outreach, and it's because of your tremendous efforts in partnership with a lot of other people in the county and in the private sector and public agencies that we got this $7.8 million grant in the first place. And so I know there's a lot of work to implement the tremendous opportunity, but thank you for all your hard work to create a lot more hard work. The county will be better for it. I really appreciate your help.
The only thing I would add is if you go to the Willamette Week this week, under murmurs, the city of Portland is considering a similar initiative over the next couple of weeks and discussing it with their city council, and I'm sure that Dave and Dave have already been called and asked a lot of questions about how they were successful about getting the grant, so thank you for being leaders in the region. With that, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Lane, for all of your hard work on getting these accomplished. We have no discussion item today, and so we'll move on to our consent agenda, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second. Great. It's been moved and my Commissioner Leehan and seconded by Commissioner Leininger, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you. On to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Bernard, do you want to talk about locators and any other things on your agenda?
Sure. Technology's changed quite a bit since last year, and there is an effort to look the sheriff and some of our search and rescue people are looking at locator, different kinds of locators. Also, we met with Hood River County and their interest in sitting down and talking to us. I'm afraid because it's government, it's not something we can just do right away, but it is something we're... but it is something we're working on, and we understand that actually both counties can adopt an ordinance without any help of the legislature, but it'd be nice to have the legislature on board to help us. I had an opportunity to work this past week with our social service department, who was involved in the death of a homeless person that I knew, and I would just like to acknowledge that we really have a fantastic bunch of people working in our social service department, particularly Linda Fisher, who helped me, who spent an inordinate amount of time at the hospital with Stan. He was able, a homeless man who the county helped find a home and who was allowed some dignity before he died, and I think it's, I'm very proud of what we do. And our veterans department, of course, helped a lot to make sure that this gentleman received his veterans benefits shortly before he passed away, but it actually did help move him forward with, near the end of his life. So, thank you. Last night I attended juvenile drug court, which is, I went to the juvenile drug court and then juvenile drug court graduation, and it's really pretty amazing. One of the things that I, first thing, first time I went, I was really quite impressed and shocked to see a kid walk down in chains, hands and feet in chains, and I thought if I were a parent, my heart would have dropped to the floor. Evidently, we are funding some more security measures that will allow those juveniles to actually not come out in chains, and they'll be in a glass room where they can be watched and they'll be safe and they'll be brought down. But really, what a lot of work. And I was allowed some comments, and Judge Darlene allowed me some comments, and I said, you know, one of the things I learned is it's a lot of work, once you're in trouble, to get out of it. And some of these people are eight months, 19 months, years in this process because they break the rules. I also learned that usually when the child has an excuse, one particular one hadn't gone to his counseling meetings, they also provide family counseling because, you know, that's really the key to success. But I heard the father, right after the kid gave his excuses, make excuses why he hadn't gone, and it was, and the judge pretty much said, you know, you go, I'm giving you one more chance, and if you don't, then you're going to go, actually, they could go to jail because that's how they get out of jail, is that they agree to work on their issues. And the parents also have to agree. And anyway, it was really great. And the staff there, again, is amazing. One of the guys, the counselor, gave them all a piece of salmon. There were two graduates gave the parents a piece of salmon and a certificate. Another one talked about how important it was, you know, that the family unit works hard, you know, to meet the challenge and that there will be failures, and the juvenile court doesn't kick them out just because they fail. They keep trying and trying and trying until the juvenile no longer wants to work at it, and then they have to face the consequences. But it's amazing. I'm also attending the Oregon Juvenile Department Directors Association Conference. That's next week. This week, I'm weak. Today, I'm heading down to the League of Oregon Cities Conference, which, as mayor I used to do, and I just think it's a great learning opportunity, and these are the cities that, and many of our cities will be there. And matter of fact, I'm going to have an opportunity to talk to Mike Clark from Willala about some of their issues. Finally, increased crime because of light rail. I totally disagree. There is increased crime. Actually, statistics nationwide is there's a decrease in crimes, which is almost hard to imagine what had happened in this economy, but I really think it's because we're providing these kind of services with juveniles. We have a great sheriff's department who's working to address crime issues. But one of the situations that happen when you put light rail in a particular spot is that you actually create new laws and regulations that have to be followed. So, there might be a trespass law. You've got onto the light rail train without a ticket. So, you would, that would be a crime. But also, Clackamas Town Center has reduced its security staff, and that, of course, has an effect on it. But I disagree totally with blaming light rail for increasing crime in Clackamas Town Center, and statistics, again, have proven, yes, he may have been a victim of a crime, and I assume he reported it. If he didn't, he should have. And statistics across the country indicate we're doing a good job. So, thank you. Sorry it took so long.
No, appreciate it. Commissioners? Commissioner Lenninger?
Okay. About earlier this month, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation approved a really significant investment of regional flexible funds in Portland to Milwaukee light rail, actually, to help make that project pencil out at a point when the federal government's ability to contribute had changed. That is an example of the fact that when we work with our regional partners effectively, it really benefits Clackamas County, and I think one of the things that we can do to really help our county prosper and have businesses grow right now is working very effectively with our partners in the region. So, I'm, as a five-person board, we have more capacity to go out and talk to people from other agencies and build those relationships, and this last week, I've been working hard to try to build relationships that will enable us to cooperate well and bring benefit to the community. I had a good meeting with Chair-elect Andy Dyke from Washington County last week. I think that having a strong relationship with our partners across county borders is going to be very important to our ability to bring resources into our county and move our projects forward. And just yesterday, I went on a tour of the new Port of Portland building up by the airport because they, too, have a lot of aligned interests to ours, including the efficient movement of freight and business products throughout the region. So, we are recognizing that through some reasonable teamwork and strong relationships, we can really benefit the county, and we're trying to, we have examples of that working in this 20 million-plus that was recently reallocated to support light rail, and we're going to keep that moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Leehan?
Yes, I just wanted to report on the big event last weekend, which was the opening of Graham Oaks Natural Area, which is Metro's newest improved park. It's a 250-acre park just west of Wilsonville, and it, they have put a lot of effort into it, interpretive panels and trails, bike trails, pedestrian trails through forest and meadows, and really a unique kind of habitat for a large natural area that, unfortunately, we had not the best weather, as you might recall, last Saturday, so I know a lot of people who came didn't want to stay to walk on the, walk through the park, but, so I just mostly wanted to remind people that this Saturday, it's supposed to be sunny and 80 degrees. So, this would be a good opportunity for you to head out to Wilsonville and just go west on Wilsonville Road, and it will become apparent to you on the edge of town where Graham Oaks is, and take some time to tour the park and read the interpretive panels, and a great place to take your kids with their bikes and enjoy one of, probably one of the last really sunny days in 2010.
Where's that name come from?
Well, Graham Oaks was named after John Wallace Graham, who is my grandfather's grandfather, and we did have about 60 of his descendants who were there for the dedication last Saturday. Many of us had never seen each other before, so it was a unique event in that regard when you're related to all these people that you don't know. But that's all.
That's all, folks. Well, it was a great celebration. Thank you, Charlotte. The, I've got four things we need to go through quickly in relation to a lot of our stakeholders that we're working with on a lot of projects throughout the county. One, Commissioner Bernard and I went to talk to the Fire Board, Clackamas County Service District Number?
One.
One. I always get confused between the sewer and the fire. They're basically the same name. So, they, we had a good discussion about urban renewal, and if Clackamas County were to go through creation of a new urban renewal district, what are the legislative requirements that we now have before us that we worked with them on in the legislature, as well as any other issues that they might have? And so, I think it's a start of a good conversation. Our county administrator and the chief, Ed Kirchoffer, have, excuse me, agreed to really get together and start monthly meetings to talk through a lot of these issues and make sure that as we go through processes, we are working together towards outcomes that are in a joint effort. So, that's good. I feel very good about that, and I very much appreciate all the work from the Fire Board, as well as their staff, on coming together on these issues because this is hard times. We all have limited budgets, and we're all trying to make do with what we've got. We also met with, we had a retreat with the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee this last week, and that went well. I think we set good goals to work on between the special districts, the CPOs, the Hamilton Villages, and our cities. So, trying to find anything that's jointly in common there is a good process because we do have things that are in common that benefit Clackamas County all throughout the county, and we'll be continuing to work on those. We also met distinctly with our cities this last week to talk about what our transportation needs are for the future and how to resolve some of those. So, we're working in partnership with a lot of people to get as much as we possibly can get either set up for when we have the resources or start working on actually producing some projects. So, that's, that was good. And then I think our last coordination with stakeholders this week was meeting with, well, the, not meeting with, but having a presentation to the chambers of Clackamas County and the state of business in Clackamas County just yesterday, and I thought that that went well. We have done a lot over the last year to really try and create an environment where business can at least survive, if not grow. And we do have some growth within the county, and that's a plus, so we're trying to make sure that we can accommodate their growth needs as fast as possible so that we are not a barrier to growth in the county. But it was, it was a good event, and my only comment is that it was probably the proudest moment of my elected official career when we all stepped up onto that platform, and you all did an amazing job. It was noteworthy. I think a lot of people noticed afterwards that we have not only a great staff that works together to make us look good, but also five commissioners who are professionals in their own right, know the information, are hardworking, and work together, and I very much appreciate that. I know you all do teamwork. When it, when it happens right, it's pretty amazing. So, I'm sorry that Bob isn't here to talk about that, but it's, the reason he's not here is because he's a leader in his own right in a lot of fields and has been noticed internationally, not internationally, but nationally for the work that he does. So, I'm very, I'm just very proud of us as a team, and thank you. So, with that, is there any further business? There is a scroll of community events after this, and if there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned.